...agreement with Connects. That's probably the most important aspect for us. We're loaning them $4 million. We want to make sure there's a performance agreement in place, they deliver. You all have all met Jim, at Connects. Yeah, but we've, we've got to make sure something happened to Jim that the county's protected with this significant investment. So at this time, we're asking the board to approve a contract, award of a contract to Connects for the purpose of providing broadband services to the unserved areas. And we've also got in there for the board, if you look at the sample motion, for the board to approve the resolution of support and performance agreement with the IDA of Prince Edward County relating to the performance agreement and the performance agreement for the Connects broadband project. So it's a resolution of support and the agreement itself. And that's trying to lock Connects in and intertwine them with the county to make sure that what they say they're going to do, they're going to do for the money that we're giving them, which is coming from the Tobacco Commission. So we're on the hook for the money, but it will eventually be repaid by the federal dollars that are streaming back. Vivian, did I miss anything? Okay.
So with Prince Edward, Lunenburg, and Cumberland?
Yes, sir. The loan is on us. The loan is strictly to us. And, and, and part of that was just the, how cumbersome it gets trying to involve three bodies, three IDAs. We are the bulk of the project. We're the largest of the three.
They started in Prince Edward?
Started in Prince Edward. We're going to take credit for that. We're going to.
Before we get to make sure we clear on that one.
And so, but it just, it was, in order to go and try to get three different IDAs, three different boards, and Tobacco Commission really didn't want to work with, I think, three different localities. They wanted to work with one entity.
Which makes sense.
And, and I, you know, the other thing that's happened is that this project has gotten $15 million in Vatti funds through CRC's help. We got those funds as well. So that's what's really going to allow this to happen. Since day one, when I got here, one of the biggest things you heard from people in the community, and Mr. G has counted it, is we do not have broadband access. Well, even people that have broadband don't necessarily have good, good access. So this is, I think, the only significant opportunity we've got. We've got $10 million in federal money and $15 million in state funds. We're on the hook for about 2 million of our ARPA funds, but we'll have fiber to most of Prince Edward.
But Doug, I was reading some of this, skimming through it, but it talked about reasonable rates for the residents. That's important because people, people, individuals can get it now, but it's so expensive. So, and the megabytes were 100, not less than 100, upload, download. I thought that's.
It's a lot better than the three that I was getting from CenturyLink.
Right. I think, no doubt, it's needed because I don't even have access to it at all. I'm uncertain.
Yeah, $49 a month for 50 megabytes, that's, that's a lot better deal.
Yeah. So I'm going to move that the board supervises awarded contract.
Go ahead, Vivian. I was going to ask if.
Oh, I'm honest, Vivian.
I just, in case there were any other questions, I just came on up in case. But no, Mr. Stanley covered everything. I don't have really anything to add. You know, it is working, the, the way the transaction will work, it's going through your IDA, but the county sort of is, what do you say? What is the word? Now, now it's gone. You're, you're backing the loan. But it is, the transaction is going through the IDA with Connects, so.
Supervisor Gilliam, did you ever come?
The total, you said 15 million, 10 million, and who are putting in for?
So 15 million in Vatti, which is state funding, about $10 million in federal funds. There's also, Connects is putting in a big chunk of money as well. And then we're putting in, it's about 2.2 million in total. And Cumberland and Lunenburg are putting in different amounts as well. But again, I think this.
Total project, 25 million?
Yeah, plus. And, and, yeah, you're talking, it's really 35 probably by the time all said and done.
100 miles of cable.
It is. And, and I know Jim Garrett's struggling trying to order right now because everybody's in, everything's happening right now at once. So he's, he's out making commitments. And that's really the need for the loan is be able to get this in place so he can pay. He's, if you look at his yard on Third Street, there's reels of fiber sitting in the parking lot that he's already pre-ordered and got here, but he's in the process of trying to get more because what this, all this money's going to allow him to do, he's got two or three crews himself that are out putting out cable and splicing it, but he's going to bring in other contractors to help them run more cable faster.
So it's a four-year turnaround.
Four, he's saying four, four and a half years. That's the goal.
And you feel good about it, Mr. Stanley?
I feel that this is the best opportunity that Prince Edward County has had to, to cross the digital divide and bring broadband access to our residents. If you had told me a year ago even that for $2 million, we could get the county covered, I thought you were joking. I, I think we've been very fortunate in that the ARPA money has come down. So really, it's, we're really, we would be redistributing federal dollars by doing that. But if, if we're able to pull this off and, and get it, then Prince Edward will be competitive, you know, with the other communities in the state.
If he does this in four years, it's going to be quite an undertaking.
It is. And I, you know, I.
Lot to be done.
And, and you'll notice in the agreement we put in, you know, we want quarterly reports, we want miles of, miles of fiber laid and number of homes hooked up to the system and just to try to quantitatively track it.
Right.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, we can, we can hear you, Jim. Speak up a little bit, please.
I'm going to move that the board supervises awarded contract to Connect for the purpose of providing broadband service to the unserved and underserved areas of Prince Edward County as outlined. I further move that the board supervises approve the resolution of support and performance agreement with the Industrial Development Authority of Prince Edward County relating to the performance agreement and the performance agreement for the Connect broadband project TRRC loan in the amount of 4 million. I further authorize the county administrator to sign the document on behalf of the county.
Could we run a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded that we award a contract to Connect. Excuse me, yes.
We want to know if there's a connection fee to each resident.
That's a good question.
I'm going back to the proposal that was submitted along.
Didn't say anything about a connect fee that I read. I'm going to say something about a fee.
Supervisor Jones, that's a good question.
So I'm going to, Bobby, I'm going to quote directly from the proposal that was submitted by Connects. There are no upfront charges to the clients. We are trying to make it as affordable as possible, starting bandwidth fee, $49.95 a month for 50 megabyte. So that's 50 download, 10 upload. In recently passed infrastructure bill, Congress allocated $14.2 billion for the Affordable Connectivity Fund. That will provide a $30 a month subsidy for qualifying low-income households to help pay for the service. That will help ensure that anyone who wants broadband can get broadband. So what that will do for a limited time is for those folks to qualify for $20, $19.95, they will be able to have 50 megabyte service.
That's right.
But again, no upfront, no installation charge fee. Good for them.
Okay, thank you.
That's pretty good.
It does. Okay, it's been motioned and seconded that, that we approve through what the contractor connects. Ms. Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Pride, yes. Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Booth? Supervisor Will? You said no. And Supervisor Jones? Okay, so that has been approved. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Vivian.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, we got you.
We got you. Okay, next we have the emergency management report from Sarah. And we realize a lot is going on.
So my deputy emergency manager is out of town this week at emergency management training. So that's a very good thing.
Thanks, Sarah.
We're going to leave.
Thank you.
The postcard that many of you may have already received in the mail, I hope, is the county's continued public messaging to encourage our citizens to get vaccines and booster shots.
And while Sarah's passing that, we see our handsome board member on there. Supervisor Gilliam?
So we, we tried very hard, based on our knowledge of the vaccinated and unvaccinated in Prince Edward County, to try and match up the geography with the communities of interest and pick individuals that we thought would convey, you know, confidence and trust, you know, in the separate, different communities and geographies of the county. So if there's a third postcard and you want to be on it, just let us know. But in the meantime, I'm, I'm not, we're, Trey and I are restructuring our reported, got a little unwieldy, so we're restructuring for 2022 and kind of wiping some of the history away. But I'll draw your attention to item number two on the first page, which is the key takeaways from the UVA Biocomplexity Institute. They do a weekly update with the Virginia Department of Health of what's going on in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And these five points that I think Supervisor Townsend quite adequately summarized in his opening remarks when he greeted everybody, which is, there is no good news about COVID and it's only going to get worse. So the, as you, that last bullet, the sheer number of new cases may overwhelm testing capabilities and drive down the case detection rate. So the cases that we know are out there probably doesn't represent the magnitude of the cases that are out there. We need to continue to pray for our healthcare workers and our hospital system and the stress that they are under and the impact that it is having on our EMS system. And so, you know, we would encourage our citizens to, you know, to use those resources wisely and as needed and not unnecessarily. But otherwise, I think this provides the board a summary. I, I think we were quite fortunate and we're not in the eye of the storm for last week's winter storm. I think it was Frida was the name that they gave that storm. Our last restoration was on Saturday because I had that individual text me so that I would know that Saturday night, everybody in Prince Edward County had power. And so I got a text message middle of the day on Saturday that we had full restoration. So there were citizens that were out four, five, six days. We did operate a shelter, warming shelter Tuesday afternoon, the day after the storm arrival. We offered it up again on Wednesday, but by that point, I will say that the utilities had done a pretty good job to bring our numbers into the hundreds. So we offered that to our citizens, but we had no takers on Tuesday or Wednesday. And then we continued to reach out through social media and just word of mouth to try and, you know, get the word out that if there were people that needed something, you know, to call the Department of Social Services. We're trying to kind of create that as the public channel for people that need something during the storm, like sheltering or anything, they need to call the Department of Social Services.
Sarah, I would like to add, you know, the first day, we opened a day warming shelter and we had, you know, keeping an eye on if anybody needed overnight. The next day, we put out that we will open the warming shelter if needed. We didn't have anybody the first day. We took a little bit of hit on social media, but really was, we were there, we were prepared, we were available. We had the facility. All we had to do is have someone drive about a mile and a half down the road and turn the lights on. So we were present. But as usual, a lot of folks go in with family and friends and hotels and, but we're there if needed. And that's a big part of the staff training is just to be prepared. And I know this year, we purchased a new trailer and to help make us a little bit more responsive with our tables and chairs and other equipment and stuff.
And our partnership with PEFIA, with the Board of PEFIA continues to serve, I think, all of our citizens well because they don't need it when we do and we need it when they're not using it. So it's worked out well. Just at the bottom of page one, you'll see the disparity between the people that are vaccinated and the people that have received their booster. So that would be a strong message now, especially during the time of Omicron, to encourage people to get their booster. All of the pharmacies in Farmville offer boosters. So if somebody says, I can't find a booster, happy for you to give them the county administrator's office phone number and my name and we'll find them one. But their, vaccines are readily available, boosters are readily available. So to really protect themselves and their families, people need to get a booster now.
Is there a price tag on that booster in any way?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. It is absolutely free.
Yeah.
They got another storm headed this way this week?
No, sir, that's not true. I hope not.
You know, Channel 8 is saying something like that, but let's just hope not.
I don't know. I haven't, I haven't seen the.
Sunday and Monday.
Yeah, Sunday.
Someone saying, talking about Sunday.
Sarah, I do want to say CVS. When I tried to get my booster, I did get my booster, but can you go on CVS's website? They send you the app mathematics.
Yeah.
They'll send you the CVS here.
That's true.
Huh, that's interesting.
And I have heard some comments about CVS.
So I know that, I know that Walmart offers both Moderna and Pfizer. CVS only offers Pfizer. Farmville Family Pharmacy offers all of the boosters, but on different days. So it's, it's absolute, and then every Tuesday, you can get a booster at the Prince Edward County Health Department. You have to schedule an appointment and that phone number is on the back of the card. So anybody that says they need a booster, there's one somewhere in Prince Edward County every single day. And if you are going somewhere and need a few of these to hand out, we have those also. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah.
Yes, ma'am.
While, while we're right along in these lines, I got to pull something I like to bring up.
Sure.
This may be a little, little off the wall, but y'all will understand, I want to finish. Recently, at Pamplin, a fellow was shot while deer hunting. Tragically, he did lose his life. But the reason I'm, I'm talking about this is there happened to be a unit fairly close by which responded and diligently worked with this man. Rescue squad did come in, they had one member available. They both worked together, got him to the hospital. 15 to 20 minutes later, he did lose his life. And the reason I'm bringing this up, we've, we've worked, Sarah knows, about trying to get our rescue units up to par, and I think we've done an excellent job. But that's something we really need to keep our eye on, this EMS, because things can happen in a split second.
Yes.
And I just thought I would mention it while I had it on my mind. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that with us. Okay, at this time, is there a report? Mascot Tara Atkins-Wilson? Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have a, a specific report, just thought I would open up and see if you have any questions. We've worked on just reviewing some documents from time to time, answering some questions. But anyway, if y'all have any specific questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions, concerns?
I have a question, I guess, for the whole board. I guess it's been a year or more ago that we said that we were going to try to look at, I guess it's been two years ago, we're going to start trying to look at some of these ordinances and things that we have. We've got several that are still, I'm going to use the word antiquated for lack of a better word, that are, that are still out there, that are punishable, but don't make a lot of sense, kind of like the deal that we had here last month with being able to subdivide land or whatever else when it wasn't necessarily a subdivision as in houses, just subdivided. I think it's something we need to take a pretty serious look at with, for Terry's, I know Terry will be involved, but if it's something that the board wants to look at and anything that constituents bring up, we've got a lot of them that are either outdated or not, not up to par with, with what we have now. I know Terry's looked at a few of them in the past, but it's still, still a lot of them out there that, we still got a couple that the, I guess Circuit Court told us to get fixed, it's never really and truly been fixed yet. And that's been three or four years ago.
That's right.
I think the biggest thing probably, Terry is looking to make sure that the, you have references to the state code, that the state could reference the disruptive.
They're not changed, correct.
Especially if you find old 15.1 and it's supposed to be 15.2.
Right, right.
I don't know if, if maybe we can work to get you on a cycle to start looking at different sections of the county code on a periodic basis to be able to get through the entire thing, maybe in the course of the next year, as your hours and time permits.
Right.
But maybe we can try to work that in.
Right, yeah, because unless somebody has a question, you know, how do you attack the beast? But, you know, I mean, just take it section by section, that would be a good.
That'd be a good, good way to do it.
Yeah.
Supervisor Emmett, thanks for bringing that.
Sure. Any other questions, concerns?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay, our county administrator's report, Mr. Stan.
Madam Chair, members of the board, a few things to report on. We anticipate hearing any data on whether the county will receive funding from the governor's business-ready sites program. The county requested 1.6 million to fund design, water, sewer, and transportation improvements for the hip park. I'm sure with, this is the governor's last week, and I'm sure he wants to announce those amounts. As soon as we hear something, we'll let you know. And I want to thank Chelsea, she's put a lot of work into getting that grant application out. DEQ Financial Assurance, the county's auditor, RFC, provided financial assurance information, and the county was able to provide the assurance letter to DEQ on December 30th to meet the year-end deadline. We still need to provide the final draft, the audit, hopefully later this month, once it's completed. Courthouse Chiller, we had a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting this past week for the Chiller Replacement Project. We had four vendors that came. I thought that was pretty good. This is a, there's a lot of work out there. And so to have four qualified vendors, I think three from Richmond area, one from Lynchburg, that was a good thing. Bids are due next week on the 20th. Our annual summary, I sent that out to the board. Staff achievements for 2021 list includes a number of items and reflects the hard work and dedication of a number of staff members. Among the items that I'm most proud of accomplishing are updated the county code and getting that online version updated. I think it'd been 2009 since that had been done. Promotion of Cheryl to Finance Director and Crystal to Finance Manager. Completion of our capital improvement plan. Alignment with the school board on a path forward for the renovation of Prince Edward County Elementary School. And I'll add that I was out there today, they had a, a pre-bid meeting for the RFP, for architects, and it looked like about a half dozen architecture firms were represented there today. The filing of the Sandy River Water Withdrawal Permit and, you know, the efforts and negotiations with Department of General Services with the state to try to move forward and serve those facilities in Western Nottaway. 2022 stands to be another busy year with a number of CIP projects, including the courthouse lawn, redevelopment of the Rice Convenience Site, start of the Connects broadband project, and development of the Sandy River Water System, and also consideration of the sales tax referendum. Digital filing system, staff has a kickoff meeting for the project on the 13th at 2:00 PM. Telephone book, a number of supervisors have raised some concerns about our information is not in the local telephone book. And part of that is we're not a CenturyLink customer, but we found a, a way to get in touch with them. I can't promise this next book, but we found a way that we think we can get them information and be able to get that included in the next round of telephone books. Want to thank Dominion Southeastern Electric and Central Virginia Electric Cooperative for their efforts to get power restored. I will say, I think this round, we had a lot better cooperation from our different electric providers. They were in constant contact with us, and we really had never had any contact from Central Virginia, and Sarah's made a good contact there, and I think they'll stay in contact with us in the future. Sales tax bill, thanks to Delegate Edmonds, he's pre-filled the bill to add Prince Edward County to the list of counties allowed to collect additional 1% sales tax. It's HB 63, if you go on the listserv, and we'll be following that closely. Redistricting, we submitted comments to the Virginia Supreme Court prior to the December 20th deadline. They received those comments and then they didn't listen to them. You know, not only didn't keep us whole, but they also didn't fix the little problem we had in the Lockett District. So Sarah and I are scratching our heads. We anticipate probably within the next couple of weeks, we'll get our committee together and start talking about options for trying to fix and solve that problem. But again, we've, we've got too many people in the Lockett District and we need to move them or shift them possibly to the lead district, but we can't change, we, we need to keep precincts whole with respect to who they move for, for the House and Senate. So that's creating some nightmares, so we'll have to look at some options. Our convenience site attendant buildings, now all the buildings versus Green Bay and Tuggle have been replaced. Supervisor Townsend, I don't know if you had a chance to see any of them, the sites?
I did, they didn't finish the inside.
Hadn't finished the inside?
Yeah.
All right. Pass that along to Randy.
Yeah, you know I'm going to look at it.
That's right.
I mean, but no, it's a really good job. It really, it's been a good, I loved the building. They probably, it's just, just cosmetic stuff.
Needs some thicker carpet in there right there.
Yeah, I've seen it.
But it's, it's really nice and the staff really appreciated it.
Recycling report, DEQ completed its review of the Prince Edward and Cumberland County were tied together in our recycling report. Originally, they thought we didn't exceed the 15% mandated recycling rate, which would cause some other issues for us, but Cheryl was able to resubmit some data on additional material that was recycled, and we're up to 21.2%. So thanks to Cheryl for taking care of that. As I've noted, our audit is behind and really its primary reason is that our pre-auditor was about a month late getting their work completed. But then also here at the end, RFC had some, had some COVID issues in the office, and then they had some snow issues. We're hoping to have a audit committee meeting probably in a couple of weeks and be able to present. I really like to have the audit in hand so that when you have your packet the week before the board meeting, you can actually see the audit before we ask you to vote on it. We want you to have plenty of time to review it, so we'll hopefully be able to take care of that. Rice Convenience Site, Timmies is close to finishing the site plan. We'll be working through the remaining issues and hopefully be able to get that out to bid later this winter. Again, I mentioned the elementary school pre-bid, I think that's due on the 21st. Actually, they pushed it back today, the 28th of January. Their proposals will be due. Reminder, statements of economic interest are due by the end of the month. Karen will be emailing you to make sure that you've got yours done. There is a mandatory penalty for not submitting mandatory, so, and Karen's, you have to report those if they're not in on time, don't you? So we'll be, we'll be bugging you.
Question about the Timmies and the convenience site, they've done Rice, are they, are they going to do all sites?
We're eventually going to do every single one of them.
Okay.
So we'll have to pick, probably the next one, Sarah, maybe Worsum?
Worsum Prospect.
Yep. Next two on the list, but we'll, eventually, the goal is to get to all of them. Sarah, have I missed anything?
That sounds like a lot.
That's a lot. That's a lot. All right, we're good.
Thank you much.
Oh, one, I did miss something. I'm going to pass this around. Supervisor Gilliam had talked to me, we had put out a, I think a report several months ago. County has recycling containers located at Tractor Supply. And we've been having issues with people dumping trash. And Sarah and I talked to Supervisor Booth, that's right in her district. Folks have been contaminating the recycling. I'm going to pass these around, if you take a look at the picture, these are from today. Lou had some, had a good suggestion, they're all, they're all different. Jerry, I think you made this one up. Supervisor Gilliam had a good suggestion, he said, Doug, it's not clearly marked that this is for recycling, not trash. So we had magnetic signs put on the cans that said, recycling material only, no, you know, no trash disposal. And we also put up an electronic billboard sign that was flashing, recycling only. Well, that worked for a few weeks, but it's slid back and now we've got people gramming containers. And Sarah, I'm going to paraphrase, but our employee was out there and witnessed a guy shoving trash in the container. He basically said, I can do whatever the heck I want and shove the trash in the container and went on. So I am going to recommend that we're going to go ahead and pull those containers. And they're going to have to go to Worsham, they're going to have to go to the other sites to recycle. But it's, we're losing the entire load of recycling because people aren't, we're not, we don't man the site. We can't keep an eye on the site. And I know Beverly, you're on the line, I just wanted to, we're going to put a notice out. I think that the end of January, we're going to pull the containers, but we're going to give the public notice, we're going to put signs up to tell them the other locations where they can take the recycling material. But it's a shame that it's being abused and it looks like an eyesore. We get complaints about the trash on the ground and like every weekend after.
I literally drove by at night and was going to bring it up, so I'm glad you did. It's, it's a problem. And we talked about this probably a month or so ago.
Yeah. We were trying to, Lou had a good idea and we weren't doing a good job of, of, you know, marking them and making sure that people knew what it's for, but obviously some people don't care.
Patty, did you see these?
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Back to the table packet, if you look at item 29, page 199, the dog trial for Jack Russell Terriers and Mr. Stanley, if you would address that. Page 199.
So we've, in your packet, we've got a attached request for dog trial for Jack Russell Terrier permit application. The event is scheduled for March 19 and 20, 2022, at the Five County Fairgrounds. The request is from Chet and Jamie Atkins, Heart of Virginia. I've never been to a Jack Russell, I've only been to a field trial for pointers. But I'm not sure, you know, how big of an event it will be, but there's no music and no other noise other than probably the dogs being on the facility.
So is that approved?
Yeah.
It's a motion and second that we approve that, Ms. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Pride, yes. Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Booth? Supervisor Booth? Supervisor Wilk? And Supervisor Jones? Supervisor Jones? Are you still on, Bobby? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And the last item on the table pack, item number 30, page 203. On page 203, you will see the list of appointments to boards and outside agencies. If you just take a look at that and then we will hopefully approve a recommendation for that. Any questions or concerns? And it shows expiration dates and everything. Who have a motion to?
So moved.
Who have a second?
Second.
It's been moving second that we approve the appointments, Ms. Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Surprise, yes. Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yeah.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Booth? Supervisor Wilk? And Supervisor Jones? Okay, thank you, so that it's been approved. Okay, at this time, is there anything else for the good of the order? If not, we may make a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
So moved and second, Ms. Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Pride? Yes. Supervisor Gilliam?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Booth? Supervisor Wilk? Supervisor Jones? Thank you, so we are officially adjourned. There's no recess.
Good job, and y'all stay safe.
Yes, please.
Jerry, note the time, David didn't get us out of here before nine many times.
I tell you, man.